North is one segment. And then talk about if you develop that and get more water to here, then you're gonna have to put in a second pipe. Because this won't handle all of the existing pipe. And so the second phase would be from the existing grid south to the creek. So it's kind of an overview of the project. And then we also will have some drawings to talk about, event center option as well. So now if we go to the next one, this is just a blow up of the area that shows the event center area. And the drainage area that would be north of the stadium, or existing bridge. Okay, the next should be the PowerPoint presentation. So give us the PowerPoint. There we go. Matt, are you gonna do the... You all can introduce yourself and you can start.
Matthew Coe, Myers Engineering.
And I'm Bill Myers, city engineer.
Alright, well, I'm gonna talk a little bit to start off a bit about just the runoff areas and basically the drainage basin as a whole. We did a hydrological analysis because there's been quite a few flooding problems downtown. Over the recent years, several buildings have had water in downtown on account of the storm sewer system. So we kind of evaluated the existing storm sewer and did a hydrological analysis to figure out, you know, what are some things we could do to improve downtown drainage, to try to mitigate some of the drainage problems. And also, we've also looked at the Harrison Avenue Bridge and the condition it's in right now being, having its load rating substantially reduced to where it's no longer safe to drive across. Start off, we'll start off with the hydrological analysis, so if we can go to the presentation.
Aaron. Aaron.
Bueller. Bueller. One backwards, step forwards.
That's not it.
There we are, there we are, that's the one. Back to the slide, please. Okay, so the entire drainage basin discharges to Snake Creek. And we broke the whole drainage basin up into fourteen sub-basins to look at different alternatives as far as possibly diverting some storm water off, or what we need to do to see what we had coming to our existing infrastructure, what our existing infrastructure is going to be able to convey. And we use several design storms and what I'm presenting here is basically the runoff calculations based off a hundred year event, which is about eight inches of rain in twelve hours, which they say the hundred year event, but in Oklahoma, that could happen twice in one year. Or, you know, it might not happen for two hundred years, but downtown Oklahoma City last year, they had an event where they had nine inches of rain and overnight, you know, major flood. So these things do happen, and when these things happen and your storm sewer becomes overloaded, then you start having issues. And if we move to the next slide here, this is a, this is, this is just delineates the different drainage areas. What you see is I've delineated four different kind of sub-basin areas and broke them down even further. Up to the farthest north, you'll see, kind of in a red color there, is a drainage area. And all that drains down to the Wentz area near Oklahoma and Wentz, Harrison and Wentz, and Cleveland and Wentz. It gets picked up in the existing storm sewer in there and goes south to the football field all the way to Springer. And that's one drainage area. Then you have Capitol Hill, it drains and the portion of the Capitol Hill area actually gets to Oklahoma, and it goes down to the south curb line, and it eventually turns south and comes down and drains into the storm sewer system down there near the Villas and Oak area. There's another storm tunnel there that picks up and goes down to Springer and then cuts over there. And there's a junction box right in front of the fire station on the south side of the football field where the two storm sewer systems come together. And that would be right there, kind of where the green and the pink basins meet, Sub Basin thirteen, right there, and Sub Basin six, just on the south side of the football field, Springer. And from there, there is a eight by six reinforced concrete box culvert that comes all the way south from there. And what we did was we looked at, okay, during this design storm, what's our peak discharge to these outlets of these basins? And so we can see right here at Harrison and Wentz, that whole drainage basin for a hundred year event, we see we have a peak discharge of four hundred and eight CFS. And also, what's the volume of water that we're looking at from runoff event like this? And you see that we're looking at thirty-nine acre feet of water, okay? So that's, if you had a thirty-nine acre field, that's one foot of water over that field. That's the volume from runoff event that we have to let out through our piping system. And then we look at our existing storm sewer capacity. And by the time you get down to Harrison and Wentz, we have a cumulative capacity of eighty-three cubic feet per second through the existing twenty-four inch pipe serving these current surface drain inlets that we have downtown, which are extremely antiquated, we have a lot of clay pipe that's not in great condition downtown. And so we have a storm sewer system that is creating a ponding effect downtown because we're dumping more water in than we can let out. And so what happens, we see the shallow flooding in the street that starts coming up over the sidewalks and the curbs and causing the issues that we hear about water getting in buildings. And then we have, you know, the other basin, and we even looked at maybe, well, maybe we can take Sub Basin four, which is essentially east of Ash, almost all the way up to Capitol Hill, be up there, and trying to divert that down south and take that. And then we get about twenty acres off of downtown, but it just wasn't enough to make a difference. And we just, for the drainage basin up there, still a lot more in red than just that Sub Basin four. We'd only be taking about twenty-five percent of that drainage basin out of there by doing that. Then we also looked at, well, could we reroute the storm sewer from downtown, maybe back to the east and come down Broad and tie into that existing storm sewer down there? Well, the problem is, we're really low. It's the intersection of Harrison and Wentz and Oklahoma and Wentz are low. It's about ten foot lower there than it is at Harrison and Broad. So by the time we took off and tried to run a pipe over there to take some of that load off of that storm drain going underneath the football field, we would be so deep by the time we got by Logan County Sheriff's Office. It was just, it was not cost effective to look at that. So we started looking at other alternatives downtown for the drainage improvements. But as you can see, we don't have adequate capacity in our storm system to be able to carry these infrequent events. And if we can go to the next slide, we'll talk a little bit more about the existing storm sewer. Okay, this is underneath the bridge structure, which was converted into the locker room. You know, the existing tunnel has been surcharged already in the existing conditions, even with the piping system up above kind of limiting what can come down. So we have like a bathtub effect upstream with this, then we drop down to this tunnel that's twenty-five feet below the street surface, okay? And this, and this is about twelve foot above the tunnel right here underneath the bridge, because this tunnel runs right underneath that bridge. And this, when it surcharges, yes, yes, when it surcharges, there's a manhole access hatch in there. The water comes up in there. You can see the high water line on the hot water tank and the urinal.
So it backs up in the cavity under the bridge.
Yes, this is, and I've heard that there's been some storm events that has pushed the garage door out from the football field down there below. So this was from the storm sewers already surcharging. And we'll talk a little bit more about what the effects of, you know, increasing the drainage capacity upstream would do to this. Obviously, you know, we would have more water surcharging out into this area that's going to be no longer there because we're taking the bridge out and demolishing the bridge. We're not gonna go back and construct another bridge, we're gonna fill up with fill. So we're gonna have to have the structure there, and it's gonna surcharge.
So the cavity's gone, so we gotta go somewhere else.
That's right.
And then if you increase the storm water getting in upstream, not only is that gonna have to go somewhere else you're adding to it, well, next place it has to go south is come out to two inlets at the football field.
And we're gonna get into this more when we kind of talk about the impacts of what one project has with regards to upstream and what we do downtown, how it affects downstream, and we'll talk more about that. If we go to the next slide, just a... Okay, this is the old brick access hatch that goes into the tunnel underneath the bridge. And this is a picture of the, of what the tunnel actually looks like coming underneath the football field. It's in, it's in excellent shape. I mean, the brick tunnels, everywhere I got in the manholes and looked down there, they were in great shape. The bricks were still in great shape, and they're gonna provide, you know, many more years of service life. And so I see no reason to try to, you know, take out existing storm sewer that's going to last, you know? So we need to, we need to save this and keep utilizing this because it's, it is providing a purpose.
It's under the bridge.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Yes, it is under the bridge.
It's gonna be filled in.
Yeah, we're gonna replace a short section of this, because it's so deep right there, with a thick reinforced concrete box culvert, kind of similar to what we did at the fire station. Just so, but from there, it'll transition back into this brick underneath the football field. And we'll go ahead and utilize this because this is a fairly substantial size storm sewer.
There's a picture on the left, that is the drainage channel that goes from Harrison all the way down. That's the fire station.
Yes, so that is standing in the...
And on the right is under the bridge, that's inlets under the bridge.
Yes, that's the, the one on the left is taken looking at the junction box at the fire station, looking north. That's, and then, yes, the other one on the right is under the bridge.
Do you have a picture of the junction box that went under the new fire department, what they did did?
Yes, I could see the concrete box right there.
Do you have a picture of that, what they, how they changed that old brick when they did it?
When they did the old brick there?
When they did, built the new fire station?
When they built the new fire station, the concrete, it was a different style. It wasn't brick, it was a block, a box culvert. They used a stone, a stone box culvert instead of the brick, they used stones.
So it's not rounded like...
So it's not rounded, it converts into a rectangular section.
It's hitting, it's hitting, that's what's slowing the water down out there in the fire department?
Not the fire department, you've got two storm sewers coming together right there. You have the one that's coming from Villas and Ash, that storm sewer system that comes down Springer comes together right there. And the one that's from the north comes down to that junction box right there. And then when it gets to that junction box and these two elliptical pipes, brick pipes come together right there, then you come into a six by eight box culvert coming out, okay? So, and that six by eight box culvert has more capacity than the two pipes coming into it do. You know, the one coming underneath the football field can carry a hundred CFS, the one going up Springer can carry about a hundred and fifty CFS because it's on a steeper grade than this one. This storm sewer right here is less than one percent grade, and the one that's coming from Villas and coming down Springer, kind of doglegging around, down Springer to Oak, down Springer, then to the fire station, yes, it's about almost one point three, one point four percent.
How tall is that tunnel, before it hits the fire department? It's eight foot high?
It's six foot, it's six foot, eight foot wide.
So, this picture on the left, this is where the backup occurs?
No, sir, the backup, the backup is occurring just because we're getting too much flow into the pipe that it can't carry it out, so the pipe becomes full underneath.
A different pipe, a regular pipe.
But that's huge. On the left, that is the pipe that gets too full.
This on the left?
Yeah.
Yes.
This gets too full?
That is what it's surcharging into the...
Brick culvert gets too, gets too full.
It surcharges into the bathroom underneath the playing field.
And it comes out that, on the right, so nothing is, nothing is blocking it up, if you will, it's just capacity.
That a camber, yes, and then I calculate the capacity of it. It's, it can carry a little over a hundred CFS at the current slope it's at right now. And then when you look at the, what we're discharging down on the previous deal, we can see that we're talking four hundred and eight CFS that needs to get into that tunnel. But some of it's getting attenuated at street level, and we, and we'll start getting in there. Some of those endless in the alley, especially when they start filling up with water, they'll start getting more head on them, and they'll start being able to get some of that water out faster, but then that costs.
And that's at the hundred year, hundred year mark.
That's at a hundred, I looked at a fifty year event too, and there was not a large difference between the fifty and the hundred year because it's such a, it's such a, it's, it's so flashy. It doesn't take a, it doesn't take a long duration storm either to create something. You can look at your short, high intensity storms with short durations, and because as, you can still get really high flow rates really quickly because it's a small basin, so you'll, you can get flash flooding.
So why is that not able to take form? That looks like a pretty big pipe to me.
Because it's hydraulic.
So what are you gonna do? So tell me, tell me the solution on how you're gonna, if that's not gonna take it, what are we gonna build?
Well, there's options that we can talk about. I mean, obviously, we want to take care of downtown, we don't want downtown flooding anymore, right? Okay, so we've got to fix downtown. So to fix downtown, we've got to do some new storm sewer with more capacity. I mean, that's pretty straightforward, but once we do that, now we're dumping more water in the area, so now it's gonna surcharge more, okay? So what's the, what kind of damages are we looking at for allowing something like this to surcharge onto the football field occasionally? That's something that's going to drain out, you know? I mean, it's been surcharging before, I mean, can we justify spending the money it takes to carry out the infrequent event for, compared to just some shallow flooded, water discharging and then sheet flowing across the football field? And then getting to Springer and going out? I mean, that's what we're, we're talking about if we don't do the other project. So that's, you know, if we want to do something down, or if we want to phase it out too, there's things we're gonna get to talk about, also going to discuss, because every, every action has, you know, has an effect. That, so what you do upstream is gonna affect downstream, but what's the economic impacts of that? Are we really causing a major damage to the football field?
You basically got two things going on. All this water that comes down here can't get in. But even the amount that gets in exceeds the capacity of the existing drainage, that brick, how do you see? And so what it does is the inlet here on the bridge, under the bridge, it comes out and surcharges.
Same that, that fills, follows building.
And it runs over, it runs over the ramp on Harrison into our building. And the question is, when you do the improvements, all this water that's in downtown that's backing up now can get into that tunnel, the brick when you saw on the right, it's gonna surcharge more. So the amount of water coming out to inlets is gonna be greater, so...
So flooding is gonna be worse.
We're taking this cavity away where it backed up in here, because the bridge will be gone, and that will be solid dirt in the future. So now there will be an inlet here, and there's an inlet somewhere else on the football field, and it will come out on the football field more so than it does now, unless you put in another pipe to take it on down to the creek. Is that unfair? That cavity under the bridge isn't that big.
How big of a pipe you gonna have to put if six by eight won't carry it?
What size pipe are you...
Well, if you, now that all comes down to, you know, do, do, we're looking at doing a sixty inch from there, if you want.
Five foot.
Yes, sir.
Round.
Yes.
Second.
Or, you know, there's other options too. Like, I don't know if they're ever looking at doing something to the football field. Maybe if they're ever gonna come in and put an astroturf or anything like that, I don't know in the future. Then we talk about doing a grid through the football field instead at a later date, so they can have a perforated underdrain system and an enhanced drainage system for their facility as well too. So there's, you know, there's, there's options here that we need to discuss and decide, you know, do we want to spend money to run a sixty inch pipe through the football field that we could let, basically act like temporary floodplain storage as, during these events that's gonna come out? Because most of your water, that first wash that you get from the rain, as it comes out, it gets out fast, and then the rest of the rainwater kind of cleans up. So a lot of your trash and debris and stuff is already kind of passed through your system, and so you're gonna be getting a fairly clean rainwater coming up because it's, after it's been running off for a while, it cleans up, you know? And so we're talking about discharging water onto an area that's really not much ground there. We're not gonna damage, it's not homes, we're not, you know, we're not, we're not talking about discharging into a residential area. And so, but, and we've transferred, you know, a problem that's already been there, and it's a little bit worse now, but we've eliminated a really bad problem downtown with downtown flooding.
But to address the mayor's question, no, the cavity on the bridge isn't that large, but it's not sealed off. There's those doors, and of course, it pushes those doors out and goes out on the field too. So it's just nobody...
It's up on the field, it's up on Harrison.
So we've had some water on the field.
Oh, yes.
Anyway, lot, lot.
And the surcharging of this pipe is not causing the surge. You have, you have two surcharges going on. You have a surcharge going on with your street drainage, where those pipes trying to get that water out of there to get to the tunnel are surcharging. And then you have the pipe that is surcharging underneath the tunnel, because where that high water line is in the bathroom, you know, it only comes up four feet. So that's still, you know, below the level of, like, even the garage, it's the lowest structure there. You know, that, that water level in there is, is coming up to there and it's getting up there, but, but that's your...
Sir, our basement sits probably at that level, that stadium.
It might be real, real close, yep, you're right, that might be real, real close.
You think that much in your basement, have you?
I've seen that building.
I've been there one time years ago, and you couldn't even get down there because it was all...
How far, is it eight feet, is it eight foot off the, off the street level there?
Because you could, but that's a garage down there.
No, it's probably twelve or fourteen, fifteen.
Okay, I have not been inside the...
That building's three levels.
Okay, okay, so there you go, so that surcharge in, he's seeing that surcharge in his building.
We've seen both floors full besides the top floor.
Okay, okay, and that explains the alley coming back and the drainage, so...
There's our solution.
So, but that's, that's a part of the surcharge that's at the Harrison Street area.
Yes, sir.
So I'm, I'm trying to get in my head, the first problem that we're trying to fix, the flooding in, quote flooding, in downtown, I don't, give me an example of when that has happened.
Last weekend. Do you want pictures?
You want some pictures? I got them.
I got, I was down there about three weeks ago, four weeks ago, with two foot of water in the basement of our building coming off the street at Harrison.
I just asked the question.
I'll call you mayor next time it happens, like I do John Gummerson and everyone else.
Two weeks ago. What we're talking about is their building does get flooded.
Well, I'm not talking about just their building, I'm talking about what, what is the extent of this downtown flooding?
Twenty years ago, the intersection of Oklahoma and Wentz would pool all through there. The bus station was where the liquor place is. And it would always get in the bus station.
And it still pools there.
And now it pools there, just, but it pools just like it used to. But there's more water doing something. And I'm not, by looking at your map, I'm thinking, rather than that red new drainage line, why couldn't that be moved up and take it, cut right down Broad Street and catch the water?
Well, what we would do is, we would, we, what we're talking, what we're gonna talk about here in just a moment is, what we're talking about downtown for the drains, because you've got twenty-four inch pipes, you've got small diameter, old clay pipe. That's not, I'm talking, going up there, doing a whole new storm sewer system downtown, reconstructing the storm sewer system that is there essentially to be able to get the water into the pipe, get it out, get it out of downtown faster than what's there now, you know, opening up the plug.
But what do you mean, Broad, what, what are you talking about?
Put the storm sewer down Broad Street, underneath the street, so it's an old brick street anyway.
And just go straight down the middle of the street with...
When they redid the intersection of Broad and Oklahoma, they changed the flow of water and turned it over. I think Mr. Herschel, I think Mr. Martin, all of them have water in their building now. Since they did, when they redid that with all the handicapped stuff, the water turns there and then it turns into that alley behind us, between Martin's and the old townhouse motel.
So it's flooding Herschel's office and all that stuff back behind it?
Which was back up Tim Green's office and filling his building up. That alley fills completely full. And we bricked our building up and got rid of the windows, tried to keep the water out of it.
And that alley, that one was when you were in...
And we did backflows and everything else that city attorney told us to do.
So Broad will catch it before it ever got to you as well, that's kind of how I'm looking at this.
No, it comes around the corner, and then it goes into where the stadium's open, the new stadium, where they have the wrought iron, and you drink straight into there when it gets full. Now, I don't know whether my ex-wife has had water in her building at the dance studio or not, but that, and it comes over our ramp, is how deep it gets in that street coming around there by Wilby's. And I do have photos and videos.
We looked, we looked at picking up everything that was coming down Oklahoma and, and turned down Broad, and you would just pick up that little sub-basin three on the, on the drainage map on the presentation. And it just wasn't taking enough of the load off of downtown, and you're just taking it, and so, you know, we were just, we were just trying to go back and cut deeper. We're having to excavate and get trench so deeper, and then, and then going through, having to pull up old brick roads? That doesn't, if the brick has to go back down, that's gonna be very costly. Plus, you're already deep to get it down there, and then you're getting down that into a residential area. And so now what we've done is we've taken, we've dumped more water on, into a residential area, and we're diverting flows. And so, you know, we're changing historic runoff conditions, because that water is now not coming as it, as it used to down through here. Because I looked at some old USGS maps, and they actually had old, old blue lines going north up underneath where the football field is, and there was another one kind of following the route of the other storm sewer going up towards Capitol Hill. And so they constructed these storm sewer systems to pick up those, those basins like that. And it was just, the best alternative that would be, the least expensive to, to handle downtown was to reconstruct what was there and keep the tunnel that you have that's there, because it, it's providing drainage too. But, but get it out there, get it, get it out there faster and get it down there...
So that's where the five foot pipe comes in?
No, the five foot pipe comes in to take care of what we, what, what we're wanting to take to the bridge. The five foot pipe takes care of the surcharging in this tunnel.
And that takes care of their problem too.
Well, if we let it surcharge it onto the football, we're taking care of them because we're opening up the drain downtown. There's another plug underneath the football field. There are, there's more than one plug here that's causing it. You've got street drainage that's not draining out fast enough, so it's coming around and coming down their driveway, coming in the alleys and everything, you know, and it's not picking it up at the street level and getting it into the tunnel fast enough. And then you get the tunnel that backs up, and then the alley starts filling up with water after that because the street pipes and the street drains cannot get the pipe, get it down fast enough. But if you let it come out freely onto the football field and surcharge there, then it's able to drain out and it goes somewhere. It's able, instead...
Captain, how do you justify that? I mean, that's not our football field to do that.
You justify it economically, because what are the economic losses of allowing some storm water onto a football field that you're likely not gonna be having a game on during a, during a huge, huge storm event? And if you do have a little bit of surcharge, it distributes over a little bit, and if it's raining that hard where you get that storm sewer surcharging, you're already playing in about that much water on the playing field anyway. I mean, so, I mean...
Did you do, have you done any calculations for how long it would take to dissipate six inches or twelve inches of water across that field?
It would, it would, it would get out of there pretty quick because...
What does that mean pretty quick?
It takes, the basin itself, it, it takes about an hour and a half for a drop in the most remote portion to get, to make its way all the way out to the exit. So the football field would get shallow, surface water in there, and then it would drain out. And we could do some things around the football field too, to a lesser cost, to assist the water get back out once it came in there. We would essentially be using a combat, so temporary floodplain storage. If we needed to phase the project out to where we didn't want to handle it, or maybe we never had to handle it because it turned out that it wasn't causing anybody any, any heartburn at the time, you know? It's just, we have an immediate need with the bridge, and we have a problem with downtown drainage, and we're, let's just keep moving through here, okay?
That's what we're starting.
Hope you guys brought a checkbook, because all I can tell you, you've got your keys way down on these, on this deal.
We have call systems in there to discuss it.
We've seen those. Go ahead, Matt.
Okay, let's go to the slide with the Harrison Avenue Bridge at the top, please. Alrighty, obviously, it's structurally adequate, and we need to demolish the structure. We're gonna put an eight by six RCB and junction box at this point. Regardless of what we do, even if we don't do any downtown drainage improvements or anything... Regardless of what we do, even if we don't do any downtown drainage improvements or anything. That we're going to construct a junction box on top of this RCB that will be able to pick up, you know, the existing storm sewer that's there. That we'll have to tie into and make sure it's a large enough junction box that we could in the future. Tie future storm sewer improvements onto. So if you wanna do the downtown improvements later, we can, we can certainly do that. We got, we we have to uh, restore that rock face veneer regardless of what we do. And so we're gonna have to go back and construct a retaining wall and and to hold the fill and and put the the rock face back just the way it was.
So where's this junction box go?
Right here on this next slide, there there is a, there there is an arrow that says the surcharge. Uh, discharge at this location and and the construction.
So the junction box goes right onto the football.
We're we're gonna pull it back to the wall a little closer, because I don't want anybody trying to 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 jump for a ball, you know, and land on on a junction box. So we need to move the junction back to the wall a little bit faster or a little bit farther, you know, maybe back, back behind the cheerleaders or whoever's down that corner.
Even back behind the, there's a, the goalpost there, there's the, what's that?
Yeah, well, I mean, for that matter, the way we do the retaining wall, we could even recess the junction box into the retaining wall. If if we wanted to maintain like the little. Arch, this little arch shape front third of the door.
So how do we do that when that's not our property? My understanding is we gave that away years ago.
You want the bridge?
No, the football field. Talking about putting a junction box right behind the goalposts?
That would be a great question for Mr. Shannon.
I don't know who owns it, so it's our answer and I don't know what easements we may or may not have. Where things are already constructed.
I just figured we'd know that since we're making a pretty big assumption there on this deal.
There's some infrastructure there, it's uh.
I mean, there's infrastructure that's ours that's there, so I'm going to guess we've got an easement for that.
I think potentially at the time, and I've not researched it all the way back. But at the time this was originally constructed, the stadium was actually owned by the city. The city did the original bond issue to match the money from uh, Public Works Authority. Uh, under the the WPA days to build the original stadium and then later it was digged into the school. So at the time, now whether the city kept the easement or not, I don't know.
So that's, we have to, obviously that has got to be solved.
If if we have to and we can't go down on the football field, we'll have to demolish the bridge. We have to restore the the bridge somehow, but if we have to, we can recess the junction box. Back behind the wall there and just have it cut out. It costs a little bit more money to construct a junction, uh, retaining wall now that we have to do like this, because we have to create a junction box that's gonna surcharge. Right there and if you don't want to, uh, if we can't, if we can't increase the discharge onto them, then we just don't do um, any storm drainage improvements downtown. And it's just leaving its existing conditions. Then you just fix the bridge and take care of that and things stay as they have.
So your your two options with that junction box are gonna be inside the bridge or you're gonna have to go out on the football field?
Well, there's gonna be, there will, there will be one located at the street level to pick up the new street inlet. Because you're picking up, we're gonna have, we're gonna have an RCB down there twenty-five foot in the ground, going where that brick tunnel is underneath the bridge. And then from there, we'll have a large riser structure that will be able to pick up the 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 street drains. It's gonna be up above the tunnel to let everything down into the tunnel. And then if you ever want to construct new parallel pipes coming out of the bridge structure, coming out from the football field. You'll need a junction box down here near there to be able to construct future. And you also have to have a place to let that pipe surcharge as it has historically.
And that junction box cannot be under the bridge?
The bridge won't be there.
Bridge's gonna be gone.
Be filled in. Where you're showing it here, it could move to the north.
We we could move it to the north, but if we want to uh, install a new pipe to in the football field. And run new storm sewer down there, then we will, it will need to pull it out to where we can take off this layer that way.
So that'd be underground or is that above ground, that junction box?
It's it's underground. It's right in the top of me, just right the surface. And it, you could put a, a top on it, it would be compatible with play.
So even if we don't have the easement, there is, there's some, still an option.
Sure.
We just have to move it further north.
Yeah, I, I, we'll have to have some sort of easement to even work on the, on the wall.
Sure. Okay, alright.
I think that's the next step.
Well, that's gotta be done. There's just the location we're talking.
Well, we need to decide what we're gonna do, then we can start digging into with random, digging in to where do we have easement? Where do we need easement? What kind of agreements do we need with the school?
Alright, let's, and then let's talk about the advantages and disadvantages slide. Yes, okay, so obviously we're we're addressing the safety efficiency that we have with the existing bridge structure. And and we can design this to accommodate future improvements. The disadvantages obviously is we're not improving downtown drainage. And the storm sewer will surcharge at the playing field surface. You know, previously it had surcharge underneath the bridge and then would blow the garage door out and then come out into playing field. Now we're gonna have a geyser, yeah, kinda coming up, not a big one, won't be like Old Faithful, but you know, we might see. We might see, you know, a pretty cool.
That's if you do the bridge on. Back into our basement before it gets into this.
Just demoing the bridge is not gonna do anything to help downtown drainage.
If we don't do the storm sewer downtown.
Yeah, we, just just demoing the bridge is not gonna, is is not gonna help any of the downtown drainage system. It it'll be set up to accommodate future drainage uh, projects that could help downtown.
But, but just the bridge project itself is what's.
Yes, we are still gonna get water in those buildings down there when we have the big rain events that we, that occurs frequently. Uh, next we have the cost estimate for the bridge demolition. I believe council has seen this numerous times. Construction cost. If we'll move on now, we can talk about downtown storm sewer improvements. Uh, what you see here is uh, essentially in red is outlining basically what we're replacing some of these pipes with. We're gonna increase the slope on a lot of these pipes and use a lot more efficient inlets. We're also gonna use pipes that's much smoother and has a higher capacities to be able to carry out this water. You can see not only are we utilizing the existing tunnels still to to pick up drainage. Now we're also installing forty-eight inch and forty-two inch uh, pipes up, going up Wentz. To uh, carry additional flows of water out of there. And at the every intersection, we'll put in uh, numerous inlets at every corner. And these will be inlets with high capture efficiency, so they let a lot of water in and we're able to get the water out quickly. And this would all tie in right there at Harrison Avenue. At the junction box, at the riser I was discussing, that would, that would come down to the eight by six RCB. And then eventually come out to the uh, junction box at the football field.
And this would also, maybe you mentioned this, but it would also involve the reconstruction of the paving on Oklahoma and on Harrison. And on Wentz from Oklahoma to Clayton, because we're gonna be taking up the storm sewer, so the paving is gonna be destroyed anyway. So this involves reconstruction of paving.
Yeah, so these are functionally classified roads by the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. And so they are eligible for some funding that we'll talk about in a moment.
Hence the checkbook.
Downtown, uh, downtown, so the demolition of the bridge improvements is obviously still necessary. It's it's safety issue. And and that has to be taken care of. The new storm sewer can be constructed with adequate capacity to mitigate this downtown stream flooding with the efficient inlets. And larger diameter storm sewer pipe, uh, but like I said, reconstruction of the roadway and sidewalks are gonna be required downtown. Which is not a bad thing.
And side, what, and sidewalks, you said?
Yes, if, maybe the ADA, some of them won't be able to maintain that were recently done, but some of them.
Because of the new inlets.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there'll be some sidewalk involved. And there's some areas that are still not ADA compliant, that we can, when we put the inlets in, we can, we can get up to eight, ADA compliant and get them up to date. Alrighty, uh, basically this was just the layout again. So let's go on to the uh, downtown structure improvements. So drainage system, you know, we're we're gonna reduce flooding depths and flooding frequency downtown. So that's, that is obviously a good advantage to this project. We're also uh, we're also improving paving downtown and doing a road construction project downtown. Uh, you know, obviously the disadvantage is that we're gonna increase the surcharge volume onto the playing field. And downstream drainage will, you know, will not have the same capacity as what's discharging into it. Next we get into the cost estimates for the downtown uh, storm sewer and paving improvements. So. Looking at around two, two, two point four million. And that's downtown.
That's just that phase.
That 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 is downtown paving and drainage, yes.
That's not bridge or nothing else. The bridge is already another half million up on the other side.
That's not downstream drainage.
Three million on that.
That's not downstream drainage, that's not event center. And uh, and next we're gonna talk a little bit about the downtown event center.
Oh, sure, this one.
Why don't we talk, can we not talk a little bit about potential funding of this?
Well, we were gonna go through and we have a summary at the end that brings it all together.
This is the bad news first.
Yeah, so the VIN center, y'all looked at this before.
Bloods in you first and then.
So we talked about this before, but basically the the event center, the sidewalks and then the roadways in and around it are eligible for the federal funding. As I, as we just led, alluded to earlier. So, uh, again, we've studied that pretty good, so on the next page, obviously you know the downtown event center, you got a green. Go to the next slide if we could. You have a green space, you have your stage, decorative paving, ADA accessible paths, enhanced safety and water feature. And I will say on the drawing, you'll see we, we focus more on the safety side, trying to maximize the placement of bollards. And efficiently place them for uh, air and traffic getting into an area where people are walking around. We're we're conscious of that. So you can't keep every event from happening, but we're, we're doing a good effort and trying to protect the pedestrians. From, from drive-throughs, to drive.
So what are you doing with the, I understand where the Powell's building is here, but what are you doing with Willoughby's and these other buildings? All across here on Harrison?
Well, they would not be touched, they would still have access as they are. And uh, they would be able to function. We have some bollards on the south side, as you can see, some of those are permanent. Those across the streets would be retractable. So under normal conditions, when there's not an event going on, everybody drives around the, the roundabout, you do your business and everything is, nothing has changed really. So uh, it just is set up where we can either have a large event or a small event. The large event, we shut the traffic off at uh, it's a broad, broad and a division. The smaller events, we move it in to the, to the closer sets of bollards. That's not another picture, but, so we can do large events or small events as needed.
But the large events, they would be affected just like they are now.
But none of this forces anybody to sell their existing property, am I correct? Talk about except for them. We're not talking, doing eminent domain on other people in here and all this other stuff.
I'm not saying that. Okay, and a water feature, and with the water features in the northeast corner of that there. And by that, you know, it could be a, something like a fountain combined with a spray park or whatever we get into when we get that far. So obviously the advantages, you know the advantages, uh, we'll go to the next slide, please. Be the, we're gonna provide secure venue for events. We're gonna remove structures prone to flooding, new park-like setting with the community, tourism appeal and disadvantages we couldn't think of any right offhand. So, anyway, that's why we put a question mark. So cost of that, it's about one point five million for the event center.
But that does not include acquisition of the Powell property.
Right, so we did not put that in there. So, can we go on to downstream? Let's go to downstream drainage. And we're gonna bring it all together with the last slide.
Yeah, we'll go through that pretty quick, cause obviously um, i- if if we're increasing the capacity of the storm sewer. From Harrison Avenue to the discharge at at Snake Creek. It it has to be done if you want to carry what we're gonna discharge from downtown without uh, without surcharging the storm sewer. We, we would need to construct a sixty inch storm sewer, but parallel to the existing storm sewer. To be able to carry the one hundred year event or the fifty year event for that matter, cause they're very, very close in flow rate. As far as the 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 peak flow rates they would have to carry, so. Uh, the the advantages is, you know, it it's gonna reduce the likelihood of of surcharging on the playing field. Provides adequate capacity to accommodate our downstream, uh, downtown drainage improvements. Uh, obviously disadvantage is, it's a high capital cost and it requires destruction across uh, school grounds there. Or who, whoever may be the owner of the property at the time.
So this goes down the side of the, of the stadium and then it's through the almost center of the, of the baseball field.
Yes, we, we could, but if. We would want some input from the school as far as our future plans, because we could certainly do two parallel pipes through there. Uh, using the poly pipe, uh, that could certainly be used to accommodate some, some uh, future drainage. For like underdrain system for the playing fields or something along that line. So that's, you know, there, there, there's some other benefits that we could look at going through here. But just for looking at it hydraulically, so we need one sixty inch, you know, maybe we, maybe we, we construct two forty-two inches going around the outside. If they wanna have an underdrain system in the future or, or something along that line, so. And, and so if you look at the total on that one, uh, that one was just shy of two million dollars too.
So.
I go back to Marcia's deal on this, on Broad. I still don't, I'm confused why we have, why we can't, why we can't go down Broad. Because you're, you're saying we're only gonna take basin three and that's all we're gonna take if we went, if we just went down Broad?
No, no, if you, okay, you got sub basin four right here, you have sub basin three. So if if we went down Ash, we could take sub basin four, and that's about twenty acres we're taking off. If we come up here and we take sub basin three, you're just picking up a few more acres. And I did that, I took and I diverted all this down to here and still ran it and it just was not, you were still, you were still overloading the storm sewer downtown. Substantially, and and now you're spending money to transfer water into a, a, another drainage area that. You know, this one's functioning pretty well over here. We we go and we add another uh, twenty-five acres of drainage area to them. Well, it's still, it still all ends up in the same place and you're still overloaded here. So, so now, now what you've done is you've added additional pipe. To 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 just transfer water that's going to from, from point A to point B, just a different route.
He's saying you still have to reconstruct all the storm sewer here.
Right.
So you're gonna be tearing everything up anyway. And if we lay storm sewer through the football field ultimately, you say we do that. Then that depth is much less than going down Broad or any of these other streets, because this is only maybe ten foot, eight foot of cover, six foot of cover versus twenty-five foot of cover.
Installation going across the football field is gonna be much easier than installation going down uh, neighborhood.
That's, that was it, we looked, I looked at it, I was trying to figure out. I mean, like I said, I even tried diverting some back. Yeah, I looked at, trying to go all the way down Broad to Snake Creek just with something too, and it was just, it was just getting so deep on your cut, it was just getting expensive. So this was.
What's the impact on Snake Creek?
Pushing right over the water treatment.
It it, it's a, this, this is um, the drainage, a hundred and sixty acres, i- is, it's, it's, it's a small area compared to Snake Creek as a whole. So, so you're, you're not.
No impact.
You, you're, you're infinitesimal, infinitesimal.
Uh, so looking at Broad Street again.
Yes, ma'am.
How much, how much difference do you think that that would be if we use that, the price? That option.
Million more?
I think so, yeah.
For, for really very little benefit, because your problem is there at Wentz and and on Harrison in Oklahoma. That's just the low point over there and and diverting, you're just diverting a small fraction of the basics. You still got, you still got everything up from Cleveland coming south. Uh, you, you've got, they're on Noble, you get a little bit of Noble that comes south, uh, as you come down, but there's a. If you, that, that bump on Noble, there's one bump on Noble that catches kinda everything going up the hill and shoots it across to the north up there, so. I spent quite a bit of time going around during these rain events we had recently and actually tracing drops of water, you know, because I was. You know, I was up at, at Capitol Hill and it, it was neat, you know, see the water that came down there actually made to the south. On the north side made to the south purple line in Oklahoma and actually turned south and ended up going to Villas, you know? And so being out there and going around, I was really.
Somebody told us that you were down there with your rubber ducky from watching the float.
Somebody fell falling into one of the concrete basin of some sort.
Any other?
Took care of your fridge roll.
Any other, any other questions on the options?
Is the water at Cleveland and Wentz? I know there's grades in the street out there.
You, you know.
Is it hitting the same tunnel or is it going somewhere?
It, 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 what happens at Cleveland, Wentz, i- i- there's a twenty-four inch pipe that runs from Cleveland to Wentz and it comes right there on the southwest corner of Oklahoma. And, uh, and Wentz, then there's an inlet that drops about twenty-two foot down and it all goes there, okay? Now, now what was neat was that drainage basin that goes down to Cleveland right there at the hundred year event, that right there is about what that. Tunnel right now can take. So you basically, I saw, I was looking at it, dude, it was taking Cleveland to Wentz, going down there and dumping it into the tunnel. And then taking everything from Oklahoma and Harrison and, and bringing it into the new. You know, constructing new storm sewer above the, uh, you know, deep, but still above that existing tunnel. And getting some of that out there. But that, that all depends on what the, the whole picture is downtown because, you know, if. If, if, if you're not doing the event center, you know, we have to, you know, that's, that's, we're, we're trying to find out what's the direction.
I don't know how we can, you know, we don't have five million to throw at this.
Let's talk about.
About the finances. Go to the last, last slide if we could, please, do it time. Okay. The last slide, what we're looking at is your total cost with everything is six point five million. About three point two million of it. We could obtain through federal assistance through the STB UZA fund, which is basically Oklahoma Department of Transportation. Okay, local government division. And there's a match involved with that, it's a twenty percent match. The portion of the downstream drainage improvements, that is ineligible. So the park center eligible for the federal funding are the bridge. The downtown drainage and the event center, okay?
So. No, go ahead.
So if we do everything, we would be up, up to three point two eight two at the end of the day, so to speak. But if we. Waited on the, you know, the downstream portion, take one point five off of that, so what would that be? One point seven, one point eight?
Yeah, one point seven eight.
Right, so that's what we'd be out. If we did not do the downstream right now, just.
Let it go out into the.
Right, and, and again, we'd have to work with the school and we'd have to, you know, talk to them and, but that's what we're, that's what we're looking at.
But you know, if you had two hundred year beds.
We, we would still do something to enhance our drainage, to let that water get out.
Well, let's look at another, let's look at an immediate deal too. If we just did the bridge. And the downtown drainage improvement and didn't do the event center. That's two point, what is that? Uh, that's two point three million.
Your portion would be, uh.
Twenty percent of that, right?
Yeah, well, that would be.
Four hundred grand.
Four hundred, yeah.
That's a lot more palatable than the million five.
Right. So, so it is.
I don't understand that because, uh, if you look at the event center, uh, when you look at the eighty percent. Nine hundred thirty-three, the local share's two thirty-three, so how did you subtract off and get down to four hundred thousand?
Well, what we did is we took one point eight million and five hundred forty-four thousand, two point three million and took twenty percent. And so it's four hundred and some thousand of two point three million. Twenty percent of the two point three million is four hundred and whatever thousand.
But you have contingency, contingencies and fees on top of that. So let's say twenty-five percent of that, what would that be? Say, say five hundred thousand.
But if you look at the local phone column, if you don't do the event center, you're only taking local cost of two hundred thirty-three thousand out there.
Oh.
Say it again?
He said right here, locals, two thirty-three.
That's the local cost. So if you say our local doing everything but downstream's one point eight. You take out the event center, you're only saving two hundred thousand of local cost. That gets you to one point six, not four hundred thousand.
Right here, he's saying if you take this local.
Is that a cumulative? Is that?
Add this right here, add, this is the event center.
We're gonna have to, uh. But the one point six is the total amount.
We're gonna have to call this, Bill.
Okay, sorry. Right?
You're right. We gotta get to, to, wow, city council meeting.
Don't we have a, we have to pick it back up down there.
We have, we have it carrying over to our next meeting.
Okay, alright, so.
Carrying it over, boys.
Alright, so we can adjourn this, we don't need to recess this and come back?
No.